Good evening. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the National Board of Education's Finance and Operations Committee at the National High School North Boardroom. It is May 14th. Thank you. At 6:03 PM, and I'm calling this meeting to order. I'll begin with the roll call for attendance. So I am here. Mr. Claffey.
Present.
And Ms. Daniels-Williams.
Present.
And we also have Mr. Donovan, and we have Mr. Rodriguez, and Ms. Jengris. And first on our agenda is the athletic payment platform, but we are going to go out of order tonight, and we're going to take Mr. Rodriguez first, who is presenting about proposed upgrades to the Nashua High School North Boardroom.
Okay, so our first premise, AV is not my specialty, but this is what we've gotten quoted through a couple of firms from CCS presentations and ProAV. The goal of this project is to upgrade the North Boardroom for a video processor, microphones, display, audio equipment, and the ability to provide video process functionality. ProAV came in at the most competitive rate at $45,033 compared to CCS presentations at $57,668. So the Department of IT recommends that we go with the lowest bid, and considering our relationship with ProAV, $45,033.
Okay, so I just had some questions about this, just because this is phase two of a project. I know that we had just done some work in the boardroom, and we did just get new microphones. So what?
To my understanding is that they needed more microphones to complete the actual horseshoe. The work that was done last year was kind of like just to make it run for now until phase two was going to be going forward. So that was the point of last year's fix to complete this project. So this is a phase two, and this is the final phase of this project to complete the full Boardroom upgrades.
Okay. Mr. Donovan, where is this money coming from?
This money's coming from the IT budget.
And it's already budgeted for, or?
Yeah, it's in there. They have excess funds in the budget due to some E-Rate purchases this year. So this is something that, this is, I'm not an IT guy for sure, but it's related to the processor here and the recordings that go back to Central Office for Tara and Gail when they try to do. It's very poor quality, and we've had a few other issues. And so my understanding is part of what this is going to do is improve that. So it has, it's going to be a two-part. Like you said, these microphones are new. The panel is new, so we've sort of doing it over two periods, two times.
Two phases.
Yes.
And part of the E-Rate process, just to go off of Mr. Donovan, is every year through network infrastructure upgrades, we pay the full amount to the federal government to purchase, or to a company, and then there's a reimbursement that comes back to the district. So we get a 65% discount rate for our network infrastructure relating to Internet. That includes Comcast, our wireless, and just our overall networking backbone. Those projects are partially funded by the federal government, and we get reimbursed for those amounts every year. And when those reimbursements come in, that gives us a little leeway to pay for projects that come up like this. So the money's not guaranteed every year, so that's why we always budget the full amount for those full projects.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
I just had a question. So like, this is the second phase. Is there more phases to come, or this will complete the project and bring?
To my understanding, this will complete the project. Yeah. We're going off of what the consultants or what the engineers from ProAV have suggested that would complete this project and make this a better environment for audiovisual and ETV and the whole thing, so.
And if I can just add to that, this takes care of all the must-haves. If you ask Pete Johnson, there's probably some things he'd like to have, but this is the must-have, so there may be some more in the future, but I think these two phases will cover the must-haves and most of the cost.
Will this empty out what's in that IT budget? What's been, we're rebudgeting what the rebate was. So is this going to empty that, or is there still more there to use for like something else in here?
Not this year. This will finish it this year.
Yeah.
And might there be more next year? Later in the year, we'll know that.
It's a yearly program, so it's a five-year cycle for E-Rate. So we, just because of our, it's dependent on school lunch, free and reduced lunch, I should say, so it's part of that, so it's because our ratio is higher. We do have the highest rate of discount for our upgrades, I should say. So that's kind of an advantage we have through other schools who are more affluent, is we get the opportunity to get more of a discount rate and get more bang for our buck to support the infrastructure.
If there's no other questions, I'll make the motion. So the motion is to approve the proposed upgrades to Nashua High School North Boardroom from ProAV in an amount not to exceed $45,033, and the funding is to come from account 91.1.99222553628.
Second.
And we can go ahead and vote? If you agree, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thanks, Neil. Thank you, Mr. Claffey. I'm trying, I'm trying.
It's the Canadian. Aye.
Ms. Jengris, are you ready?
Yes. Okay. Good. All right. Thank you for letting me come and take a few minutes of your time to talk about our new online registration software. I shouldn't say software, I should say platform. A little different than the way it's listed on the agenda. It lists it as a pay platform. I want to make sure everybody's aware, this is for all of our registrations, all of our middle school registrations, which we do not charge any fees for, as well as students who don't pay online. This is how we are going to do all of our registrations. Because of the transition, hopefully, to the new software, we are going to delay the opening of fall registration to June 10th this year, which is just about a week later than we normally open it. So just a little bit of a history. So we have been using a program called Family ID. We started using that for the fall season of 2013, so it's been about 11 years we've been using it. We do it three seasons a year, both high schools, all three middle schools. In the spring of 2020, we also used it when nobody was in school to help with collection of fees and things like that for some of the senior activities, their capping downs, things like that. In the past few years, I've also been using our Family ID system to help the North Music Department do their band and chorus camp registration. In 2020, Family ID was bought out by Arbiter Sports, and that's sort of where things changed with the program, and it stopped growing. So our current system, parents go in and register, they have an option to pay with a credit card, that's where they sign off all the legal forms. Basically, as I explain to the kids, is your parents give us permission to let you play sports, they assume the risks, and they give us permission, if you get hurt, to treat you, all the parent legal things. Everything goes through the online system, including parents do have the option to upload current physicals, which is very helpful. Within our department, we communicate live reports to the coaches. So we send the coaches information, and if I register after the coach gets it, all they have to do is refresh their screen, and they get any new registrations automatically. And we indicate approvals, who is eligible with their physicals, impact testing, their grades, their behavior, all of the eligibility checks that we need to do, we do through the online system. So it's a registration system, but it's also a communication tool from our department to our coaches. Current challenges with our new system, why we started thinking about looking for a new system, is there isn't an easy way in the system to directly communicate with students, with families, and things like that. For example, your baseline impact testing is expiring, you need to come on Tuesday night to take that. There isn't a way to do it through the system. We have to download an Excel file, copy all the email addresses, put them into our Outlook, and then send an email that way. So that's one of the challenges. Easy communication is available, but for more money. Once Family ID was bought out, we lost a great customer service. It was a small business, so you got very one-on-one attention, and we sort of lost that. The program is very cumbersome to build reports and share that out, and we've sort of reached the limits for what we can do. Once Family ID stopped being Family ID, they stopped making improvements and listening to us on what features could be added. So we're sort of at the limit of what we can do. So the new system we are looking to transition to is called Final Forms. They are a company that does all of everything I just described to you, and then additional things. The interface from the parent and the student and the coach side is much more user-friendly, and I have some screenshots I can show you there. They are continually updating their technology. They're a company that's been around since 2012, but the program has changed and the platform has changed almost every year since then. There are about 27 athletic departments already in the state of New Hampshire that use Final Form, many of whom also made the transition from Family ID to Final Forms. Couple of the things, communication, I know is really important to our school district, to all of our schools, and to our families. There's some automated communication that goes into it, so, example, to use the expiring baseline impact test, we won't have to go look at a date and send families emails, the system will automatically send those emails for us. And then there is easy ways within the system that we can send emails to everybody who's registered for fall sports, or everybody who's registered for football, for example. We can group things and send emails and notifications directly through the system. So there'll be a vast improvement of communication that way. Some additional features that we are excited to implement, there are some additional eligibility features, one of which is a medical kind of tracking. So our athletic trainers will be able to go into the system, and if Mr. Donovan has a concussion, he'll be able to go right in, the athletic trainer will be able to go right in to Dan's profile and put in, Dan is on day four of concussion protocol. This is what he's allowed to do today. So it'll be easy communication from our athletic trainers directly to our coaches, which is then also directly communicated to the parents. So that's a very exciting piece that we're looking forward to. Additional eligibility checks, like if a student is suspended from school, we can go in and put that right into the system, so the coach can see, that kid's red today, they can't play. Oh, they're suspended until Friday. So there's a lot of things in there. Coaches can build rosters right in through the system, and it's an easier way for us to track student history. So looking at a few screenshots, and it's kind of hard to see with the lighting in here, but you can see the top three students. This would be you logging in as a parent, these are all your kids. The top three bands, the entire row is red, those students have not yet been cleared to participate. And you can see on the left, there's incomplete forms, one has an expired physical, one has unsigned forms. Maybe the parent hasn't signed, maybe the student hasn't signed. Whereas the bottom two, you can see, are green, they're marked eligible, they're ready to go. This is also a parent interface, so on the left are all of the different forms you would have to sign off. Academic eligibility, permission for us to put your child on a bus to another town, assumption of risks, waiver of liability, emergency medical information, et cetera, et cetera. So you can see with this student, which ones have already been signed off and which ones have not been signed off. So you, as a parent, clearly can see, oh, I need to go off and, you know, check off on the red ones. And then we can add our student athlete handbook, everything will be customized to us. Then again, this is for middle school and high school. This next one is just a sample of the automated email. So this one, you can see, it comes from mailman@FinalForms, but it's clear that it's, you know, so-and-so's physical, it will expire in 60 days. So you, as a parent, know that, and then it gives you the information, and there's even a link where you can log in, and it'll show you how to upload the physical directly into the system. This is sort of from our side. So again, a little hard to tell with the lighting, but that top row is yellow. So that yellow row, if you see the fourth icon from the left, it looks like a little clock, and it has the number 24 next to it, that tells you that that student's physical will expire in 24 days. So they're good right now, but the minute that turns to zero, that row will turn red, and that student is no longer eligible to participate. And then the next row's green, that student's all set. The next two are red, there's something going on. So that far-left icon, you can see where it says clearance items, grade check, medical issue, behavior. So that was that extra piece that we're going to be able to track a lot of information for our coaches and our students and their families. So if we can put as many things in there as we want to, so this is where concussion protocol will show up. This is where a student might have a broken ankle, so they can't participate. We can log all of that there. If all of them are green, that icon turns green. If any one of them is red, that icon is red, and that student is not eligible. So this is just that increased communication and increased ease, and everything is in one place. This is an example, and just for disclaimer, these are all fake students, none of them are real, this is nobody's real information. This is an example of the emergency medical card that gets created from the information that the parents input, and coaches have access to this, our department staff has access to this, the athletic trainers all have access to this. So emergency contact information, allergies, et cetera, et cetera. So again, this is just another interface. This one is what the athletic trainers could do and could see. Again, you can see a couple of red, there's something going on, those students are in some sort of protocol, they can't participate. The one on the bottom had a high ankle sprain, but is now cleared, good to go. There's ones that's yellow, that student might have limited participation. So an easy, quick glance, our coaches and our staff will know who can and cannot participate on any given day. This just kind of shows us our compliance. We can do this by team, by school, by the entire season, all of the athletes for an entire year. Sorry. Costs? The cost is already included in our budget, the budget I presented to you a couple of months ago. We've already budgeted for this. It is comparable to what we should be spending, and so what we should be spending is what I budget for. Because Family ID sort of reached its maximum capacity with us, they've been giving us a 50% annual grandfather discount, so we haven't been paying in full for that. Family, excuse me, Final Forms has given us a prorated and graduated cost over the next three years. So instead of paying $4.25 per person right away, we're going to pay almost half of that. We're going to pay $2.25 the first year, $3.25 the second year, and then we'll get up to full price in the third year, and they are giving us a 50% off implementation fee. So they kind of want us on board. So in conclusion, benefits of making this transition, improved customer service, Final Forms is a company that was founded by and is run by current athletic directors. One of the main people who runs the company is still an athletic director in the state of Ohio. So she is really big on what we need, compliance-wise, eligibility-wise, and things like that, and building into the platform those pieces. Simple communication, they have built-in forms, but we can customize them for the information that we need. There's a parent playbook, so Final Forms already has a document that we can post to teach families how to do this, because it's going to be new. Some families have been doing this for all 11 years with us with multiple children, so it will be a shift. There's going to be training for my staff, and then in turn, I will train our coaches. And there's also potential to expand beyond athletics. Like I talked about, we did some things for the seniors in 2020. I've been working with the music department, so there is opportunity to expand beyond that for a variety of things. I know that was a lot of information very quickly, I'm sorry.
Do you guys have any questions?
So that your wonderful staff won't be trained, you'll be trained, and then you train them, and?
So my staff, my athletic coordinators, and my secretaries, we will all be trained by the company. Yeah. We will then in turn train the coaches on how to use it. Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
What's the implementation year? When are you planning to implement this?
Tomorrow. Well, in some ways tomorrow. We want to do it this spring. So registration will open on June 10th for the fall season. We would like to get it up and running by then.
Absolutely. It sounds awesome, because my kids play sports, I love it. This is already in your budget?
Mm-hmm.
And for next year?
Yes. Yep.
So you said they're giving us 50% off the implementation fee?
Mm-hmm.
And the graduated amount? So it's $4.25, I think you said?
$4.25 per individual. So if a student plays multiple seasons, they count only once.
And it also says that the more registrations, oh, the lower the per-person fee?
Yes.
So $4.25 will be the amount?
Right. So this is based on about 1,500 registrations. They have another tier that if you go above 2,000 registrations, then that per-person fee actually goes down. It's kind of like buying in bulk. The more you buy, the less it costs you.
So are we going to, we'll be paying that fee? And then?
It's part of the, part of my budget. It's already budgeted before.
Okay. All right. And the, so the implementation fee that we're getting 50% off of this one-time?
It's a one-time, just so they can like build everything for our five secondary schools. And to be honest, it's $500. I mean, we're not talking tens of thousands of dollars for the implementation.
Okay. And it's comparable to what you should be paying if you weren't getting 50% off now?
Yes.
Okay.
And not knowing when they were going to take us out of that grandfather discount, I've always budgeted for the full amount.
Okay. All right. Well, that sounds, that sounds great. If nobody has any, do you have any more questions?
All right. So I'll make a move to approve the athletic department's use of Final Forms as a new online registration platform, beginning in June 2024. The implementation fee and annual expenses will come from athletic department's contract services line of the operating budget, 91.101233853628.
Second. So moved.
And I'm a yes. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Definitely yes.
Okay. All right, then we'll sign.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice drive, Lisa.
I had a, I had a couple of questions. There's things that are broke out of the athletic budget. What number is the athletic budget when I'm looking at the budget forecast?
Or what are, are you looking at the large? Yeah, that's by account, so you won't find the athletic budget, that's just by account. So the athletic budget is in a number of different accounts. So that, that's the total school district. If you wanted to look just at athletics, I'd have to print one for you, which is just athletics. This is the total district.
So up next, we have Mr. Sean Smith.
Hopefully you saw the memo I prepared and sent in advance. Didn't have all the pricing. I now have all the pricing. So these are to replace six storefronts at bicentennial. So storefronts is a construction term, so when you talk about storefronts, it's the metal enclosure that includes windows, doors, the opening for unit ventilators, that sort of things, a whole metal structure and glass, and replacing that with a new. The existing ones are rotting out, rusting out, to the point where critters, various sizes, numbers of feet crawl in. Also got rainwater intrusion if the rain's coming from the right direction. So this, this is the perfect example of spending money on deferred maintenance to avoid bigger costs down the road when you do a total renovation or reconstruction. We've done four or five of these in the past couple of years, and then this, the six, price actually came down this time. We usually figure on $25,000 for opening, and we're getting six for right around $90,000 if you add everything up. So this, we solicited quotes, only got two back. One was from L&amp;W, $51,000 and change. That was from Portland Glass, $73,500. And L&amp;W does not provide glass, we had to go out and get a separate quote for that, which is the handout I just gave you. We got that from Marvell Glass. So what I'm proposing we do is we bundle together the L&amp;W supply quote with the Marvell Glass quote, and that'll be our contractor, contractors to do the work. The existing storefronts do contain asbestos, there's flat panels, they're called transit panels, so we need to hire a company to remove those, and another one to monitor and make sure that the materials, which you don't expect, that they'll make sure the air is cleared after the work is done. So that's another $7,300, plus about $7,000 is what I'm estimating. But once you get into asbestos, you just never know, so you'll see my recommendation in a minute. We did budget $150,000 for this. Add up the quotes for L&amp;W Supply and Marvell Glass, and the asbestos removal and management of that, it comes to $91,249.11.
Can you repeat that, please?
I recommend, however, that we add a little bit to that as contingency. Again, if you're dealing with asbestos, it's good to have an extra in your pocket.
Much, what do you think?
I'm asking for not to exceed $100,000. This is $50,000 less than what we had. $50,000 not spending on this could go to another project we might have in the queue, or just again, next year and do some more storefronts. Permeance money does not expire every year like.
So what I put on here is, I'm just going to read the motion first, and then if you have questions. I have a motion to approve the purchase of six new storefronts, total cost not to exceed $100,000. Does that sound okay to you, Mr. Donovan?
Sure. You might want to mention who we're purchasing from, L&amp;W Supply and Marvel, or Marvell, I don't know if they say it.
Do I need to mention the company that's doing the asbestos?
It's in your package here. I've got, give me a second, I'll.
RPF.
RPF is doing the monitoring, and one source is doing the actual abatement.
Yeah, so maybe instead of making a big giant motion, you could say, per the memo dated vendors, per the memo dated May 9, 2024, and operate from Sean Smith.
The addition of the Marvell Glass.
We'll have to fix the memo. So when the full board gets it, we'll add the $25,895.
So vendors per memo dated 5/9?
Yes.
Okay.
Memo from Sean Smith.
Probably want to also add that funding from deferred maintenance.
See, Mr. Smith likes to complicate things. He's done quite well tonight.
Okay. So what I have now is a motion to approve the purchase of six new storefronts from vendors per memo dated 5/9 by Sean Smith, funding from deferred maintenance, not to exceed $100,000. Okay. All right. Did you guys have any questions?
So I have, I have a question. So you know, I'm going back to the deferred maintenance. If we're. If we're already behind, why is it coming out of that account when there's other um, accounts for facilities to, to use money from? So uh, uh, is, is a hundred thousand dollars? We need the storefronts, we need bicentennial to be safe. That's not, not the question. My question is, why is it going into deferred funds when there's other money that we have to use by June? By July first? By contract? Why is it not going? Why are we not taking it from there instead of putting something else in deferred maintenance? Since we've already talked about how far deferred maintenance is behind.
So the money that expires is a word, it, it runs out at the end of the fiscal year, right? So I think maybe that's what you're talking about.
Mm hmm.
In my operating budget, I don't have a hundred thousand dollars to do stuff like this. This, this has been identified as a need for quite a few years. And it has been in the deferred maintenance plan along with the other twelve million dollars of projects. So it's just, it's percolated up at this point, that's why we're going this direction. Um, if you were thinking about any surplus year-end funds, I guess that's a possibility, but I don't think Mr. Donovan is prepared to commit to that.
So can we give the board an option to take it out of the deferred maintenance or put it into the deferred maintenance and make that rise up? Or use these elevated funds? Use the funds that are technically in overage, they're not in overage because they can be used by the district. That are left for this year instead of growing this pot anymore. Because you know, we've, we've talked about this a lot in the last two weeks about um, the deferred maintenance and I would hate to even bring something to add to that. You, you know what I'm saying, that, that to me? But I'm deferring to you both that have created pockets of what needs to be done. Like I said, these were created well before I got here. So instead of putting it in deferred maintenance, you know what I'm saying, there's other monies out there that we can use instead of growing that. And I would like that to be at least set on the record. You know, I don't know where it comes from or where it will go, but that's, can we have um, numbers drawn up like that?
Well, when we get to the, later on in the meeting, I'll talk about the forecast. The, the forecast isn't showing a whole lot of money left this year. So since we want to get this done this summer, we should use the deferred maintenance. If there's some money left and in another month, you'll have a more exact number, but at this point in time, I'm estimating there's only about a hundred thousand left. So we certainly, and if my estimate is off, then if we don't approve this, we don't get this work done and.
And I mean, the numbers sound almost absolutely perfect, right? You know, it's almost a hundred thousand, this is almost gonna cost a hundred thousand. I, like I said, I don't know how it's usually done. But that's what I'm saying, let's not dig more in over there and do that if we have an option. And I, I hear you. You're a wizard with these numbers, I love it. Can, you know what I mean? Just, I want to think outside of the box.
No, I think, I think your idea in general is a good one. If I was with four hundred or five hundred thousand extra, then maybe we could do that. But with my estimate right about this number, it's probably not a safe thing to do because if I'm off a little bit, we're gonna overspend the budget and we can't do that. So it's just, it's too close this year.
This is just following the plan we've laid out for a long time. It's, this particular project has been in there for a good number of years already. So we're just following that plan. Um, actually, I think this past year, correct me if I'm wrong, there were some surplus funds that were put into heard maintenance. So that's just, that doesn't sound like that it can happen this year, but eating the process. I'm the sort of guy that has his hands out for every single pot of money that's out there anyways.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and read my motion again. I can make a motion to approve the purchase of six new storefronts. Then this per memo dated five nine by Sean Smith, uh, funding from deferred maintenance, not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, I'm gonna push you on to, um, Ms. Daniels Williams. And um, and so I, I'm a, I'm a yes?
Aye.
Okay, so um, so that's, that's a yes from all of us, um, and thank you very much.
Good chair? Yep, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yes. Yes, we can.
Okay.
Okay, so next, actually, we'll go to number three since we skipped to Sean and that's fine so that the
Okay.
That crew could come and go. Number three is the CTE reserve account purchase. Now, the, this purchase is only um, five thousand six seventy-five, which doesn't typically go to the board level. But what the, the accounts, the funds we're using are reserve fund accounts that the Board of Education has to approve the use of these funds. So if it's only two dollars, you still have to do it. Just letting you know that that's why this is coming forward. Typically, you only approve items over ten thousand. But basically, what this request is for is um, the North School has a T-Stop school store where they sell some food and some other items. I think it's run by the marketing DECA group. Um, and the uh, countertops are in really bad shape, um, discoloration, cracking, et cetera. The uh, health department said you really need to replace those. So if you're gonna continue running this store, then it's time to go and replace the um, the countertops. So that will make it a safer, cleaner, better place so they can continue uh, running with that process. So actually, last year, they tried to do this, but they went to a couple of places and they said, we'll bring the countertops, but we install them. Something to do with their warranty. The union said, no, 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 that's our work, you can't do that. So they had to return the countertops. So this company says, fine, I'll just sell you the countertops. And you guys go ahead and put them in. So that's what the plan is going to be, so our internal union staff will do it. So basically, there are two CTE equipment reserves accounts. One has two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars left in it. So the first part, that's where we'll get the first. The interesting thing is, that's like half of the total. I really, when I saw that, I thought I made an error. But so basically, half of it is gonna come from the old reserve, that will zero that account out. And the other half, the, the other two thousand eight thirty-seven will come from the new reserve, which has five hundred and forty-seven thousand in it. That is the one. Now, keep in mind, that sounds like a lot of money, but that's to replace a lot of the equipment um, for the CTE programs. So a CTE program can um, use up three to four hundred thousand easily doing upgrades to their program at certain times. So uh, this fund gets the money that comes in each year from students at other districts that attend our CTE programs. Those are the funds that go into this reserve account and then we use those to upgrade our equipment. The other way we get equipment for the CTE is through the Perkins Fund. But that's a grant, Perkins Grant, they're very specific about what they'll allow you to buy. And um, replacing items can be somewhat tricky through Perkins, they allow certain ones, they don't allow others, so that's what the, that's what the second um, reserve account is.
Um, so my question when I read, when I read this was um, the, you're zeroing out the, the old CTE equipment reserve?
Yes.
And then using money from the new CTE capital reserve account? Um, how come there's two different accounts? And is, will that, uh, the equipment reserve seven zero seven six, will that be reopened or?
No, that'll be closed for good. What, what actually transpired, that was opened up, I don't know, maybe before I got here. Um, but it wasn't done correctly. There was no, to set up an account like this, you have to have a resolution at the Board of Alderman to approve it and that was never done. It was just opened up prior to me getting here and they started putting money in. And then I think it was David Dean, if you remember him. Um, he said, you know, this account was never set up, what are you doing? So we said going forward, we'll, we'll put in a resolution, we set up the new account and they said, okay, instead of transferring the money over, which I thought might have made sense, they just said, just spend it down. So that's why we're doing it that way.
So how long has it taken to spend it down?
Till now, probably. That probably happened, I don't know, ten years ago, nine years ago.
Okay. And so um, the new account, the SRF?
Yes.
Will we have to approve any money spent from there?
Special revenue fund, you don't have to. You, that will follow the same rules as how the purchase is over ten thousand dollars. So if it was a five thousand dollar, excuse me, purchase, you wouldn't have to do that.
Okay.
But since most of the item, this is specifically for equipment. So they're not gonna buy supplies and things, so most CTE equipment does raise to the level of over ten thousand, so you will be seeing uh, requests for this.
Okay. All right, um, do you guys have any questions? Um, okay, um, I'll make the motion, uh, I make a motion to approve the purchase of countertops for the North School T-Stop store at a cost of five thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Funding to come from trust fund seven zero seven six and special revenue fund two two five eight. And you need me to read the amounts?
That's okay.
Okay, all right, second anyone? Okay, thanks, John, Ms. Daniel Williams. Um, and um, I'm a yes? Ms. Daniel Williams?
Yes.
Aye.
Thanks. All right, so you can go into the next.
Okay, next is the furniture at this school, the North High School. Um, this school opened up, I believe, in two thousand two. So over the twenty-two years or so, high school kids don't tend to be easy on furniture. So the last, I think, two or three years, when they had money left in their operating budget at the school, they've been taking that and using it to, to buy desks. So it's the same desk so that they have a standardized desk in the school, which makes total sense. These desks, um, they got quotes, they're Verco desks. So thus, when you look at the pricing, you'll see that Verco has lowest price because they're the manufacturer. Um, but they did get prices from WB Mason and Decker also. Um, so they're going to be using um, twenty-five thousand dollars, five eighty-two of their excess funds in their operating budget this year to, to purchase desks. Fairly common thing done by schools at the end of the year, if you have some money left in your operating budget, a lot of times they'll upgrade furniture. And at a school this large, lots of furniture, you know, it's, like I said, I think it's the last three years, they've spent between twelve and twenty-five thousand dollars on improving the getting rid of the oldest and bringing in some new.
Do you know how, how much longer they have before all the chairs will be updated or all the desks?
Well, it's, it's one of those things like, it's a desk, it's not like a piece of HVAC equipment, they go one at a time, so.
Okay.
Now, if you have the nice person that sits, the small hundred pound freshman, they're not gonna hurt the desk, you got the senior football players snacking around.
Yeah, that's true. Um, okay.
Donovan, same question. Um, I, I love that we're getting desks for North. Um, I love that we're getting desks for kids. I, why is that not in the budget for actual desk for the school? Instead of, okay, well, we get to the end, we have to spend this money, so they get the leftover. Like, I, I mean, I, it to me.
This is their money, we give each school a certain amount of money and it's a calculation that we do. So typically, a high school gets about two hundred thousand dollars a year. And I basically say, here you go, principal. You, at, at your high school, you have two hundred thousand, spend it on all the stuff you need. Paper, supplies, all kinds of conferences, whatever. They, I don't really, as long as it's reasonable, we don't really hold their hand to the fire, they get, that's their money to spend to run their school. They come to the end of the year and they said, okay, I think I, I didn't buy as much paper, I didn't buy as much this or that, so I have some money left. So I'd like to buy, I'd like to buy desks, so that's how they do it. Um, the only other way to do it would be, you know, if we budgeted in the operating budget said, oh, we're gonna give twenty-five thousand to the North High School every year, that would increase the operating budget by another twenty-five thousand. So this is just sort of the way, this is the, the specific school's extra money and they're gonna use it.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the purchase of a hundred and twenty new desks for the North High School from Verco for a cost of twenty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty cents. Should be charged the account ninety-one point one point zero four one one six zero seven one eight zero zero.
Second.
Um, and I'm a yes. Ms. Daniels Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Lovey?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna practice saying I, later after the meeting. So the, the next thing is the um, the initial year-end forecast that you carried in, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just ask? Can I just ask a quick question? The next three items that you're gonna be presenting, we're not voting on anything, right?
No, you will vote on the transfer report.
Okay, okay.
If there's an item over five thousand, you're supposed to vote on it.
But other than that, these expenditures were already approved?
Yes. Yeah, this is.
Except for the transfer, except for the transfer reports, right? So we can't undo something that was?
No.
Okay, thanks.
No, this is sort of where we've spent so far, yep. Okay, um, so if you take the, the new sheet that I sent you, um, you flip to the back and you look down at the bottom in the box, you'll see the remaining number, it's a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Okay, so that's my estimate. It's just a guess, it's not a, it's called an educated guess. What I gave you last month was an educated guess of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, so that number's gone down, not up. So we'll go through, I'll sort of try to explain what, what transpired in the last month. So looking at them in groups, so the first group, you go to the front page, you see the salaries and wages. And the third column from the right, where it's remaining, you'll see right down uh, the subtotal of that line, one million three hundred and fourteen thousand. So there's still extra money in the wages. My estimate last month for the wages was in excess of one one seven five, so it actually went up. Amount remaining went up, so that's, that's a good thing, by about a hundred and forty thousand. Reason it went up is I was able to fill in the actuals for the month of April. Okay, so I filled in the actuals for the month of April, my estimate was higher than the actuals. So that's a good thing. And the one area that you have to be conservative when you're budgeting is labor dollars, right? If you miss that one, it's the biggest one and you can't afford to miss on that one, so being off by a hundred and forty for a month isn't too bad, really. Talking about nine dollars, ninety-five million in total. So that's the news on that. We'll have, I'll do another update next month and I'll have data through May and I'll probably have a better number for the summer teacher pay too, so it should be able to tie it down a little tighter. The next set of accounts for it's fringe. The next set of accounts for its fringe benefits, the first three, when you look at it, there's a significant sum of money left over there. But the first three are FICA pension and, and medical, all benefits. Those are all estimates done by the city, they put them into our budget. If it's overrun, they come up with the difference. If it's underrun, like it's at this point, they take the money. So it's not money we get to keep, okay? Um, so the only line item in there that you get to keep is the educational assistance. And based on what I've seen so far, it looks like we'll probably have about sixty-three thousand extra. Last month, I guessed about sixty, so pretty close, difference of three thousand. Then the next set of accounts, professional and technical services. Um, that I'm estimating is gonna be a minus eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Okay, in that set of accounts. So what I'm gonna have to do is move some of the extra payroll dollars down to cover that negative amount. Last week, I guessed that the negative would be seven hundred and forty-eight thousand. Now I'm saying it's gonna be eight twenty-eight, so that's, that's one of the decreases in the total, about eighty thousand. And the two items that are causing that are the staffing services line, five, three, four, five, two, staffing services last month. I guess that would be about a minus one forty-three, it's more like a minus one seventy. The reason that's higher is the April staffing services invoice came in higher than we had been running. The good thing about that means we had more subs in the building. Bad thing is it's costing more money to do it. But, I mean, the whole goal is to get more subs, so. And then the, the, the bottom one there, bottom line item in that group, contracted services, that's the big negative number, six hundred and seventeen thousand. That, as we've talked about a few times and as I put in this year's, next year's budget, the extra one point five million, that is the inability of us to get enough special ed staff, whether it be teachers, paras, specialists, all, so it's a mix of all of them. We haven't been able to hire them all. We have to go out, because we have to provide the services for the students' IEP, so we have to go out and get a contracted service to do it. So like I had said, when I put the budget together, I put an extra one point five million in next year's budget. I had never had to budget that before. This year, most of this extra cost, because it's over three million dollars, I got using the ESR funds, but the ESR funds are used up. So, I mean, there's a few items remaining, but for the most part, there's not gonna be much more money. So that is hitting our operating budget. So that's why that line item is, is, is low. We'll get through it this year. Next year, we'll see how things work out and hopefully we can hire some more, uh, staff.
I have a question about that. Um, I mean, if there's other people that are willing to work for contracts or contracted services, but they're not willing to work for the school district, then that would be an indication that we're not paying enough, right? I mean.
Uh, that could be one thing.
Is there any, I mean, with all the unions that we have here, is there any way that we can adjust that, put money into that part of the pot instead of? Yeah, I mean.
You know, the, the, the way that teacher contract works, for example, is it's based on your year's experience and your educational level. It's a grid. Um, and if you're a special education teacher, the contract service company is probably paying you more money than the contract that we currently have would pay you. So the only.
I mean, special ed teachers don't get paid any more than regular ed teachers? Okay, all right. You should have known that.
No, I mean, it's in, in a private sector, let's say you, you had physicists and engineers and geologists and you couldn't find any physicists, you'd pay them more money because you couldn't find them. The market says they make more money, you could do it. Typically, that's not the way teacher contracts work. Now, the teacher contract will be negotiated next year. Maybe that's something that can be discussed during the negotiation, you know, if you have specific things. But I, that, that would have, that's a big discussion with a lot of people.
Don't you wish that you were gonna be around to find out what happened?
Can I just, uh, just looking at a headline from, um, PBS or NPR from January. What's driving a special education teacher shortage and how schools respond? I mean, this isn't, I don't think it's just about the money. I think the consultants that we hire might have, you know, limited, they can't commit to a full-time position. Or they have more than one specialty, so, you know, maybe one day they're special ed, another day they're, um, doing some kind of counseling, who knows? But I just think this, I don't know, I understand what you're saying, if we could attract them, but I, there's more to this shortage problem than just money.
I, I agree. It's, it's, it's a complicated thing, that's a piece of it. But there's a flexibility thing, being a contractor. Um, you can work for us part-time or you can, when you work for contractor, you, you, flexibility is easier. It's, it can be more frequent, you can do it two weeks, two weeks off, that sort of stuff. If you're gonna work for us, you're gonna be at least part-time. So.
That means that we really can't do anything about this amount of money right now.
Not right, no, right now, the year's almost over, right? Can we do something next year or the year after, maybe? But that's a discussion, a bigger discussion.
A much, much bigger discussion.
And one that we need to have because we want to be sustainable. You know what I mean? This, this is.
Yeah, no, it is, it is something that we're, we're going to have to do. I would suggest to you that the ESR funds and COVID funds exasperated this. This wasn't what it used to be. But when the contractors, they're business people, right? They found out there was a lot of extra federal money out there. So the cost for, let's say, a special ed teacher of seventy dollars an hour suddenly went up to ninety dollars an hour. Everyone had the money, so everyone paid it. Now that the ESR funds are over and you, if you read more and more, you, you know, there's layoffs in districts, people are, you know, there's a lot going on because the ESR money gave us short-term, in my opinion, excess funds. We didn't need all those funds over a short period of time. But they happened, you have them, you spend them. And then they're gone. So maybe the prices will drop a little from, because there won't be as much of a, people won't hit, school districts won't have as much money to spend, so it might be a little more competitive. Okay, um, so the next group down, property services. Um, that, last month, I was projecting it to be about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars extra and now I'm down to a, sort of a minus eight. So that's one of the bigger differences, a minus one twenty-seven on my total. And what really happened there and the, the number that came in for, um, heating gas was two hundred and fifty-four thousand in the month of April, which is a really high number for that late in the year. What probably happened was back in February, all the invoices didn't get in in time, so they sort of slid out. Um, probably didn't take that into account. So I sort of updated this for the, for the rest of the year. Ho, basically what I'm saying, if you look at the remaining for heating gas, we're gonna overrun that by a hundred thousand. Hopefully, it's not gonna be that much. I kind of put that in based on what showed up in, in April. When I do this next month, I'll have it through May. May should be a relatively low month, though we have had cooler temperatures in May than we typically do. So maybe the heating gas might be, that's why I, we figured I'd be better safe than sorry there. So that's really what the biggest swing is. I said, we'll, we'll see in, what happens in May, it should, should kind of. But that's why I changed my forecast. Okay, the last section of here, the sort of other services. Um, the big items in here are, um, down near the bottom, where the transportation services and the tuition out of district. Number that changed the most on my estimate was the special ed transportation services. We got more, uh, invoices from the smaller providers. Most of our transportation's for student, obviously, but when we have the out-of-district students, then we have to transport in vans and things like that. Um, and some of the McKinney-Vento students. A bunch of those invoices came in, so I sort of had to raise, raise my estimate there. Um, I'm gonna be doing more work on transportation specifically. I have a lot of data on that, so I can get for, by the time we do this next month, I'll have a good, solid number. By the time I do this next month, there'll only be a week or so left at school. So once again, that reduced what I think we have an extra, but part of it was being more conservative with the special ed transportation.
I guess I had a, um, I had a couple of questions, but I know that this is just what has already been spent in what the forecast is. But there, there's a couple of things, like, um, th- there's just a couple of things that I'm like, well, why every three to four months are we spending that? Or, um, you know, like, what are we renting? You know what I mean? Like, different things like that. In February, we have twelve thousand dollars worth of something that was rented.
Oh, you say you're up on the rental line. Most of the rental lines, you'll notice, there's nothing in the beginning of the year. And then there's, most of that is for athletic things. We rent the pool from Hawaii, we rent the hockey rink, we rent gymnastics and we rent the other. Gymnastics. Hockey. But those are, those are sports-related things, so that, that, they're winter sports. And then they don't rent anything in the fall. And then the end of the year, it's renting the tents for graduation and that sort of stuff.
Maybe skiing?
Skiing's, you're right, that's peak.
I, I guess it's just confusing because it's not in that actual budget line, like, it's not in the sports athletics budget line.
Though it is, but this is just all the rentals for all the departments. That's what this, this is, this is, this is a total school district by, organized by account. So the sports stuff was anybody that charged a rental, any, but it's, like I said, it's sports in the two high schools for graduates. Those are the only items that go into rentals.
Um, I have a question about the, um, the out-of-district tuition. I was just looking at it and it just varies so widely across the different months. And I would think that for the most part, there'd be the same amount of kids going to the same schools. Um, um, like, I could see if it kept growing month after month, but it, it goes from like seven eighty-five in October down to five eighty-four in November and then back up again. I, and I just was wondering why that is.
It's just the timing of when the invoices come in. Some of the out-of-district schools bill us monthly, some do it quarterly.
Uh-huh.
So it's when they come in. We have a separate spreadsheet that tracks every single student, month by month, and we review that about six times a year with special ed. So we know, okay, new kid came in, it's a hundred thousand dollars for the rest of the year, whatever. So we have more detailed tracking than this.
Okay.
So it's, you could, if you looked at that spreadsheet, which we don't share because it has names on it.
Yeah. Um, like, like, stuff like that, that, um, you know, that we don't see right now, um, could we request to see something like that with the names redacted or something? I mean.
If you wanted to. I guess we could, uh, I could check with special ed and they could probably send you the sheet without the names.
I, you know, I'm not thinking specifically special ed so much as some of the other things, because, um, you know, um, I've only been in the chair for a little while, but I wanna make sure I do a good job and to know what's going on, you have to really know where the money is going. And, um, I, I think that maybe in the future, I'd be more interested in getting more information, so.
Okay, I mean, there's, there's all the, for the most part, all the big accounts like this, we have subledgers to this. Right, this is the top level that you're. At now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, um, so there's that, then we flip over to the back page. Um, and you can see the, uh, supplies and materials is the first set. For the most part, these are all relatively s- small accounts. The beginning part of it is where the schools spend most of their money on office supplies, educational supplies, medical supplies, et cetera. And then there's the Sean Smith plant operations things, electrical plumbing, HVAC, janitorial, those are all his accounts. Um, so, and then towards the bottom are accounts that are typically used by the curriculum group. But there's no really large, uh, negatives or positives. People sort of use those accounts. We typically, I'm, I'm estimating there'll be about ninety-seven thousand left, it could be fifty, it could be a hundred and twelves, but, but it's not gonna make a big difference, it's not. The, the amount of money that it's gonna differ isn't gonna be too much. Um, the other expenses, that's the indirect costs, that's the fee we get when we bill grants, we manage the grants. If you're the fiscal agent for a federal grant, you can take two point seven percent back. That's what this is. We are, um, we had a lot of audits to share and a lot of changes from the state with the grants, so we're a little bit behind on the billing. So, um, look at, look at the numbers on that line, you'll see that the numbers for like May and June are much higher than what we had most of the year. And that's because we're gonna be catching up on all the billing. Um, the audits are done, we're in a much better place, um, with the whole grant process. Um, Crystal and Tina have done a great job with that, so now we're, now it's, it's thrown all my hands around. Um, so that, that number should, may even go up, I feel pretty good about that number. Okay, and then there's the equipment, the equipment line, we will have some excess this year. Um, as we talked about earlier with Mr. Rodriguez, they had some extra money. That's the E-rate funding that we got back. So there is gonna be some extra money in the computer hardware and software accounts. I'm getting a better detail on that, working with the manager at IT, the financial manager there. Uh, but at this point, there, there should be extra money there. We can tell them they can buy some computers with it next month, or we can tell them we need it to pay for the out-of-district or whatever. We'll figure that out, but there will be a little bit of extra money. And, uh, so that's pretty much it, the last two, the budget adjustments items. Those are the facility rentals that we get as income and the fees we get from students that Lisa Chingra spoke about earlier. Uh, those numbers, I'll have a pretty tight number on that pretty soon, so my guess is that would be better than it is now, not worse. So even though my total dropped to one eleven, um, I think it possibly could be a little higher. Um, but like I said, next month, number that I give you should be pretty, pretty solid and I'm hoping it's gonna be a little higher than one eleven. Now, that's my number, that's what I'm sticking with.
Absolutely. I, I had a cou- the furnitures and fixtures?
Yes.
Has twenty-four, five, nine, four in it. Is that what North gets or is another school getting that?
No, the furniture, that's the total, twenty-four, five, nine, four is the total of all schools. So what North is going to do is they're gonna move money from other funds down here. They haven't done that transfer entry yet.
Mm-hmm.
So that transfer entry actually probably went through in May. They have to transfer money to this line and then they'll put the purchase record through.
Um, I, I just saw that on the, on the bottom, it says more funds needed for special ed contract services over in the last, I wasn't sure why it said that.
It's just a note to myself. I shouldn't have put that on.
I guess it was meant to be though, it's true.
How many, how much more funds are needed?
Well, I think we have here, I'm working with Alessa, who's the special ed financial person. Um, and I'm gonna ask for another update. I'm gonna have to give her, I'm gonna make an entry tomorrow to give her some of the ex. And I'm gonna ask for another update, I'm gonna have to give her, I'm gonna make an entry tomorrow to give her some of the ex. Excess labor funds, so that she can pay some invoices, and then at the same time, say, okay, I'm gonna give you this to pay the invoices that you have now. Give me a final estimate for the end of the school year. So I'll have that number in the next.
What happens if we end up being, um, short money at the end of the year?
That's never happened with me.
I believe it.
So, it won't happen. There are, there are a couple of different things you can do, so if I'm off, if, let's say we're minus a hundred thousand at the end of the year. I have, let's say, for out of district costs, I have a special revenue fund that I could move out of district cost. I have a reserve account. Of about a hundred and fifty thousand, if, if our, um, electricity and heating went way out of control. So when I first got here, I said, what are the things I can't control? I can't control out of district, cause I don't know which kids, I mean, I could, I'd know what the number is to start the year, but if we have a bunch of new kids, or a bunch of kids that existing go out. I don't, I don't know, so I can't control that, so I have the special revenue fund. Where I can put some costs to if I need it, that's a safety net, same with electricity and heating gas. Now, you can buy in advance like we do, but what happened to us this year, that contract ended in November. And then the new one that we signed on with the city went up about three cents a turn, so it got a lot more expensive for the second half of the year for us. That's something we have no control over. So I do have reserve accounts in areas that I don't have control over.
Hey, quick question, um, how were you able to build up these reserve accounts?
When I first got here, and we had had that six million dollar problem. My predecessor, I said, you know, from, I've been working in this field for a long time, in the private sector, you can have. Reserve accounts of things that you set up, you, and, and mo- if you want a good solid balance, a good company, you need to have those kind of things. School districts don't tend to have, especially dependent school districts like us. They didn't have all that in place, so I said, we should do this, we should do, so, two or three things. The first three years or so had those set up, so there is a little built in safety net, but you don't want too big a safety net. Because if you put too much in the safety net, the property taxpayers have to pay for it.
Is this, is this something that, um, these special reserve accounts, is this something that will, um. That the administration has shown an interest in keeping after you go?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, right, cool. It's really, it's really nice to know that we have it, um, because of course, you know. This, like, the special ed stuff is so expensive and out of district and all that, and, and, um. It's nice to know that we won't be short.
Wouldn't be short, and, you know, the, the special revenue fund that we have now, that we. The revenue for that comes in from the students that attend our special programs, like Brentwood and the. Speech, the, the hearing programs at New Surles. So those are, those are becoming more and more popular, so they're bringing those money in, that's what goes to special revenue, so we can. Pay for the out of district, cause there, there were years where we didn't have, we overran this budget. Because, simply because of out of district, so that's when we used that special revenue fund, like, two or three years in a row, it was three to four to five hundred thousand. So the special revenue account went down, but for the last few years, when COVID came, those costs went down. And we're starting to come back now.
It's crazy, I mean, I, I hate that, um, the kids who are in special ed programs. There is like, almost like a price tag on them, um, cause they, they can cost a district so much money, and. And now having kids who come in from other districts can make us so much money, um. It just seems, it just seems wrong, but that's, I mean, that's the way the system is right now, so.
Yeah, the private schools charge you lots and lots. Now, I'm not an expert on special ed needs, children's, but, you know, some of these kids have, have some real needs. So they need a lot of support.
So, are you, are we gonna go through the April financial report, too?
I think this kind of, that's the same thing.
So just the April transfer report, then?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all we have left.
It, it was, it was a lot, it looks like the schools have been busy.
Okay, so. I'll just run through the transfers, the, um, first transfers is, that is the transfer for the furniture. Okay, so we, we talked about, they're, they want the twenty five thousand worth of furniture. You can see they're taking it from, they had extra money in mileage, conferences, and they had a lot of extra money in educational supplies. But remember, when schools do budgets, they budget specific areas, and you go, I don't know what to do with the rest, and you put it in education. That's sort of there, that's how they budget, they say, you gave me this much, I know I need this much, I'll put the rest in supplies. And then as the year goes on, if they don't need it, that's when they start moving around, so. North had almost seventeen thousand, they're moving it. Buy the furniture that you approve. The next one is, um. The. Now, the cell phone stipend that's given to. Administrators and principals. They get forty dollars a month, um, and when we budgeted it last year, we put it all in one line. And this is, so this is a very late budget fix, we're putting them in, because the charge goes to wherever the person works. So if it's the principal or Dr. Chris, the charge goes there, and it's something we budget at central office, it's not part of the school budget. So at the end of the year, they need the money to cover the costs that we charged. That's all that that is, is spreading it out to the various schools, it's all in one, it's all in the, uh, goal one account.
So that's different than the fifty five, eleven, eight? From this one, that's different from.
That, that's. That's the same line as, um. No, it's, that's a fifty five, one, one, eight, that's, that's the expense, but all we're doing here is moving it from one department to multiple departments. And I, it's just a budget transfer, moving money from one school to another school.
But next year, we shouldn't have to do that because we're getting the digital thing that we approved earlier.
No, this, this. This is a, no, this, this is cellphone stipend given to principals and administrators. Sort of a benefit, and then there, if you take this stipend, the forty dollars a month. You have to answer calls, share your number with other administrators. That's what it is, they have them at the city, too.
Pay them to answer the phone?
Pay them to use their personal cellphone. So that they can be accessed at five o'clock in the afternoon, or on the weekend, or whatever.
But do we provide them a district phone?
Well, they, they have a, just, like, they have one in their office. But this is free, we provide a stipend so they can use their own personal phone also. If. They're gonna use their office phone. But if they're not in their office, cause it's a weekend, or it's a night, it's, they've already gone home for the day, whatever.
So, that sounds right, that, you know, cause if they're using their own time, that's fine, I thought that we also provided them. An iPhone or whatever, some kind of.
We don't provide the actual.
Device.
Cause that.
Sounds fair. They need that.
Okay, so that's what that transfer is, transfer on the back of that is related to, they charged. Um, an H vac thing to a contracted service and vice versa, so that's fixing that, it was just fixing a, a mischarge that was made. Career Center North, this is, as, this is sort of the, just like the twenty five thousand that the. The North used to buy furniture with. A lot of these entries you're gonna see going forward is, I have extra money, for this example, in equipment. And I'm moving it to supplies, I'm gonna spend the rest of my money in supplies, they call this the spend down, right, so we give each school their amount of money. And so they have amounts sitting in budget lines they don't need, so they move it to one line, and they buy the items they need. The next one, number one fifty two, same thing, that's a spend down for the, uh, C T E program. Uh, Fairgrounds Middle School, um, they're moving money from computer equipment and software to supplies. Buy supplies for the science department. Then the next one's for New Surles, it's a spend down also, where they're taking it from those four accounts and moving it to. Uh, seven, one, eight, zero, zero, which is furniture for a classroom. Another one for New Surles, where they're doing the same thing, they just did it over two entries instead of one. The High School North, um, they didn't have enough money in their rental line to, to do the graduation tents, chairs and things, so they. Moved it from supplies to rentals. But when you go to Stellows, sit there and watch all the graduates walk across, you'll have a cheer to stand on. Then the Nashua Technology Center again, C T E program, they're moving money from a bunch of different accounts into supplies. So they'll buy supplies for various programs. Uh, the page on the back is Nashua Athletics, um, Lisa is one of the most detailed people you will ever find. And she spends every single penny, she tracks it probably better than I do. So that's her entry, um. And then the North, North High School, Career Center, same thing, they're moving from furniture and equipment, et cetera, to supplies. Pennachuck Middle School, they're moving from dues and memberships to supplies. And the last two, Fairgrounds again, for, uh, computer equipment they didn't spend to supplies. And Fairgrounds Middle School, uh, software and equipment to supplies, so. That whole last ten or so that we said, that's, they're, they're just moving around the money, they, keep in mind, when they do this budget, they do it in December. For the next school year, so they do, they estimate it then, and then now the changes they're making are basically a year and four months later. Okay, that's. Didn't spend it where we thought we did, that was like over a year ago, so moving it into the right lines. What we tell people, we want the cost to be in the right place, so when you look at a general ledger, what is your supply cost? All the costs are in the supply. But computer equipment, you want, so when you go back and compare year to year, the cost of those items is there. Move the budget, you don't move, what they used to do is they would charge. Like, computer supplies to an equipment line, cause they had extra money in the budget, in the equipment line. It's like, no, that's not what you wanna do, because over time, you're comparing your actual costs, so you wanna put your cost to the correct line item. Move the budget, not the cost, so that's why there's a lot of budget entries at the end.
Do all the schools have money left over at the end of the year, are they given the money equally?
There, it's an allocation based upon the number of students they have, so for example, Fairgrounds has five hundred students, and. Broad Street has two fifty, and they're gonna get more money, not necessarily double, because we give sort of a standard amount of about eight thousand per school. No matter how many kids you have, then we take the rest of the money and divide it up based on the number of students. You're gonna need more paper and crayons if you have five hundred kids than if you have two hundred fifty kids, right?
Um, all right, I, I, I think we're ready to make the motion for this one, um. Uh, I can make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty four April transfer report.
Second.
Thank you, and, um, I'm a yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all set then, motion passes, and, um, I think the next step is to, um. Um, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, all right, so we're all set, thank you.
We didn't vote?
Oh, yeah, we, I'm sorry.
Gonna vote no, just for.
Yes.
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 All right, so now it's, thank you.